Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Albany City Council meeting on Wednesday, January 30th at 4:00 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And please join me in the presence of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one mission under God, and the universal liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Allison, give a roll call, please.
Counselor Novak.
You're muted.
I know I saw her. Oh, okay. Counselor Newton.
Present.
Counselor Kupczynski.
Here.
Counselor Madigou.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor McGee.
Present.
Mayor Johnson II.
Here.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have two proclamations. I'll be reading one proclamation and the other proclamation I'll be reading at the four chaplain ceremony at the American Legion Post 10 this weekend. Black History Month, February 2023. Whereas Black History Month reminds us of our responsibility to honor the contributions and achievements of Black and African Americans and their pivotal role in shaping our state and our nation. And whereas Black communities, activists, academics, military, professional leaders, political leaders, artists, and innovators have made long-lasting contributions in Oregon's history and have helped develop and shape Oregon's heritage and cultural landscape. And whereas the presence of and visibility of the Black community continues to enhance and shape the quality of life in the city of Albany, Oregon. And whereas Albany is committed to diversity, equal opportunity, inclusion, and mutual respect as a fundamental aspect of a healthy, thriving community. And whereas the Black community has been a target of discrimination and violence based on identity, which conflicts with the core values of our as a community. And whereas Black History Month calls our nation's attention to the continued need to recognize and combat racism, to build a community that lives up to our core values. And whereas Black History Month is a time when all Americans are encouraged to reflect on past successes and challenges of Black communities and to look for a future of ensured freedom and equity and inclusiveness. Now therefore, I, Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor of the City of Albany, do hereby proclaim February 23rd as Black History Month in the City of Albany, Oregon. And witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 30th day of January 2023. Alexander D. Johnson, Mayor. Thank you. You're muted. Business from the public. There was no written testimony submitted. No one signed up to speak. After, does anyone in the audience like to speak? Please.
Novak is still muted.
You're still muted, Counselor Novak. She must be not talking to us. Have a seat. Please identify yourself. Don't need your address or phone number. Three minutes, please.
Name is Tom Cordier. Address is 2240 Northwest Park Terrace in Albany, Oregon. And I have a handout. Can you hear me, Counselor Novak?
Thank you.
Counselor Novak, can you hear me?
You're muted, Counselor Novak. Tom, go ahead, please, continue.
No, I'm not going to participate until the other counselor is here.
She can hear you.
I, she hasn't.
She can't hear anything?
She hasn't acknowledged that at all.
So go ahead and restart the clock as soon as Counselor Novak comes online. I've asked her to exit and come back in.
Mayor, I hope this can be resolved quickly, but in an option to you is to move on and come back to business from the public if you'd like.
Counsel, you guys are okay with that?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. We'll come back. Okay?
Okay.
So next on the agenda's item is adoption of a resolution exemption from competitive bidding to purchase firefighter turnouts. Chief Shane Wooton, page five through eight in your packet. We're going to come back to you as soon as we finish this presentation. Okay, Counselor Novak?
If she has come, if she's gone out and come back, you may want to check and make sure it's functioning.
Can you, can you hear us now, Counselor Novak? We can hear you. She's texting. She has no video or audio. We can see you. So let's have the chief go ahead and go until we get this resolved and we'll bring her back in. Go ahead, chief.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, council staff. In front of you tonight is a request. We're seeking permission to purchase turnouts through a cooperative purchasing agreement through Sourcewell. And just to give you a little bit of background, and especially those that are listening online, that our firefighter turnouts, which I brought a set with me as a display, visual aid, generally last about 10 years. And how we've done it in the past, we purchased a set of turnouts for somebody, they become their primary set of turnouts, and then after five years, we purchase another set and the primary set becomes their backup. Because in, with firefighters, firefighters have a 14% higher chance of developing cancer than rest of the population. So we're really cognizant of the carcinogens that are on the turnouts and our gear. And so we're washing them and people need a backup set frequently. Well, we put together a diverse group of department members to go through, evaluate different turnouts from different manufacturers, and they have made a recommendation to me as chief what we should purchase. Thankfully, we have some money coming in from ground emergency medical transport that we're going to transfer over to our equipment replacement fund to be able to make this purchase. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions for the fire chief?
And, and real quick. So you, you might be wondering what $3,800 per employee gets you? So here's just an example of, of the pants. They're really complex with, you know, they have to allow heat to escape from our bodies, but also have to prevent heat and shield us from, you know, potentially the thousand degree temperatures that happen in the house fire. So, and then a jacket right here, made of the same material.
Weighs about what, 28 pounds?
Oh, those turnouts probably are more 10 to 15 pounds, but by time they put their air packs on, they're probably upwards of 50, 60 pounds.
Wow.
Yep. So happy to answer any questions. Please.
I have a question. You stated that they last about 10 to 15 years. Is that correct? Are these newer, improved ones that you're going to purchase? Are they going to last longer than 10 to 15 years?
Probably not, no. So a bunch of things go into determining the life of turnouts. We, in our department, well, first off, the recommendation, the national standard is 10 years. And that's also governed by NFPA, the National Fire Protection Association. So 10 years. But then there's also the caveat of wear and tear, right? That if you keep UV light off the turnouts and you're not using them very often, they'll subsequently last longer. But for our folks, they're pretty busy and they train quite a bit, which adds to that wear and tear. Well, we have our turnouts inspected annually by an outside third-party agency, Northwest Safety Clean, I think is the name of the company. And they go through, they inspect the turnouts, make sure that they're safe, they put their little stamp of approval that we've done that. And then they also make, make modifications or repairs, actually, to turnouts that have something wrong with them, like maybe a tear or a rip. So the 10 years isn't a hard, fast rule. It's, it's a standard or a guideline, but there's a lot of factors that play into that. Yep.
Any other counselors have any questions? Counselor Novak, you have any questions for fire chief? She's still having technical issues. Okay, she's still waiting for her technical issues to be resolved. Question for you. What do you do with the expended ones that are destroyed or?
Well, with the way we're set up right now, because we were actually slated to purchase turnouts at the beginning of the last biennium, but because we didn't have a funding source lined up, we tried to extend the life of them. So we really don't have a large cash of turnouts to potentially donate. But in the past, if we have somebody that's going to a foreign country or somewhere, we'll sometimes load them up and donate them. Because there's not any value to us for them after that point, but maybe to some others there are.
Thank you. So counsel, do you have a motion?
I move to approve a resolution after an exemption from competitive bidding requirements and authorizing the fire chief to enter into a contract to purchase Lion V-Force firefighter turnouts from Sea Western, Inc., using a cooperative contract with Sourcewell and Lion First Responder PPE, Inc., not to exceed $315,495.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Counselor Novak, you can raise your hand, aye or no.
Aye.
Aye.
Counselor Novak? She's still having technical issues. So I have five votes, correct? Okay, motion passes. And I'll get her, once I get her online.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, item six, award of a contract. It's a ward of a contract for de-watering chemicals at the Albany-Millsburg Water Reclamation Facility. Director Bailey, page, oh, you're not Director Bailey.
Sorry, I'm not Director Bailey.
You changed your hair. Okay. What's your name, sir?
My name is Brian Stevens.
Nice to meet you, Brian.
Water reclamation facility supervisor.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors and staff. As I mentioned before, my name is Brian Stevens, and I'm here on behalf of the water reclamation facility. I'm requesting a resolution awarding a contract for the purchase of de-watering chemicals and authorizing the public works director to sign a contract with Polydine, Inc., resulting from the ITP for de-watering chemicals. The de-watering chemical is an important part of the city's new de-watering and compost facilities. We use this chemical to remove water from our biosolids. This decreases the cost involved with hauling and disposing of our biosolids, along with producing a quality product to be used in our new composting facility. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Go ahead, Counselor Kupczynski.
Just one question. I didn't see the total cost for the bid on this paperwork we got.
Yeah, I didn't see it either.
The total cost is $142,290 per year, roughly.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions, Counselor Novak? She's still having issues. Any other counselors have questions? Do you have a motion?
Move to adopt the resolution awarding a contract for the purchase of de-watering chemicals and authorizing the public works director to sign a contract with Polydine, Incorporated, resulting from the invitation to bid for de-watering chemicals.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Motion passes. I cannot, still cannot hear Counselor Novak, so it'd be a 5-0 vote. Can you call in? So next on the agenda item is consent, adoption of a consent calendar. Counselor Novak would like to remove item 7A2.
Remove for?
Do you like to pull it and discuss? Yeah, discuss later. So do we have a motion on the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar minus the one item that Counselor Novak would like to discuss.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the consent calendar for everything except for item 7A2. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no.
No.
So we have four to one. Counselor Novak, can you hear us now? She cannot. She's on the coast, too. She can't come in. Matt, have you told her to, on her mic settings, to select the arrow and change those?
May I suggest that we postpone this item until our next meeting? Just a suggestion.
Yeah, works for me.
If we can connect her by phone, would that be sufficient?
Should I have her just call me?
There should be a call-in with the, with. Yes.
Counselor Novak.
There's a link, the email.
Okay, we'll join you. We can see you just fine. I'll join you.
Get the phone number for you.
My phone, okay? Counselor Novak, can you hear us?
I can hear you, yes.
And we can hear you.
Great.
Okay, you're connected by my phone, so we'll carry on back to the mayor.
So I have, per your request, I have pulled item 7A2 off the consent calendar for discussion. Okay? But so since you can hear us now, I'm going to go back to, should I finish this or go back to the business from the public? Sean?
I would go back to business from the public, because I think they're going to be.
Discussing that.
Discussing that, yeah.
So Mr. Cordier, she can hear us now.
I'm not at all, I'm not at all sure if she can hear or really comprehend what's going on. But she's not on the screen now.
She's listening. Ask, can you confirm that she can hear?
It's not great, but it's better than not hearing at all, which is what I had previously.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So three minutes, please.
I've given a handout to the counselors in May of last year. Uvalde, Texas became the face of public safety system failures to protect public school students. 19 students and two teachers were slaughtered by a single shooter in 77 minutes while 376 uniformed officers did nothing. The shooter was known by the system to be a danger to students. That event triggered my interest in the Public Safety Commission. The common comment after these dreaded events is usually, gee, I never thought that would happen here. I want the Public Safety Commission, Albany Police, and Albany Fire to always know and plan that it really can happen here. So I applied for the Public Safety Commission when a vacancy was created, and the council approved my appointment on August 10th of '22. Upon joining the Public Safety Commission, I was told the PSC has never included school safety in their domain. I said, well, it should be. They are our schools and our city, and the whole city engagement is needed, not just having a relationship between the schools and the police. We, we, the Public Safety Commission has a significant role to play. Uvalde further, in December of the 20, in December of the year 2022, a report concluded that the school site was so congested that law, with law enforcement vehicles, that only two ambulances were able to get to the school. So many, so many seriously wounded victims were transported to hospitals using school buses with no EMT or paramedics on board. I, I'm on the Public Safety Commission. I'd like to remain there. I think it's highly unusual for a new counselor to terminate or seek to terminate participation in a public school or public safety forum. Counselor Newton's actions appear to be the result of political differences. This is a non-political commission. No other members were ever asked whether they would step aside and to create a vacancy. And Mr. Rao's application states that if no vacancy is there, he wants his application to be placed in queue for the next vacancy.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
May I make a comment?
So we're going to go back now to.
Questions of the.
Any other public.
Engagement with me to ask me a question or two?
Nope, no, sir.
Thank you.
Does anyone else like to speak? Okay, now we're going back to, to the consent agenda. Per Counselor Novak's request, I have removed, pulled the item 7A2 for discussion. So we passed the motion to speak, to approve the consent calendar with that withdrawn. We have one no and four yeses.
Yeah, I misread that. I would like to, as long as we're revisiting this, my vote would be an approval of the consent calendar. Yeah, with, as we're doing it right now.
So Counselor Novak, I assume that you'll be a no if, without keeping this on the consent calendar?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
So I took a motion to remove 7A2 from the consent calendar for discussion, or excuse me, to approve it without a 7A2 on the consent calendar. We had five votes, yes. What is your vote?
My vote is, is, yes, to, to remove it for discussion and approve the rest of the agenda. Yes.
Okay, thank you. So now Counselor Newton will have the opportunity to discuss why she made the change. Or is she making the change? No.
Okay. Can you hear me now? Perfect. Excellent. So first, I want to clarify. So Mr. Cordier and I, we had a wonderful discussion for nearly an hour last Thursday when I spoke with him and let him know that I was wanting to swap him out with Eric Rao. I understand, and as, when we discussed, I told him that I understood his, his concern and frustrations, which is, again, why I think it's important to appoint Eric Rao, as professionally he is, an emergency response planner. He previously was a firefighter and emergency manager. He's worked in public safety since 1998 in a variety of places and roles. He's also written plans, policies, and agreements. He also has two children that are currently in public school here in Albany. I think that, you know, I did not ask or talk to anyone else from other positions that were appointed by other counselors. This is the seat that is appointed by Ward 1A, and so this would be the seat that I would be appointing to. And that was the only motivation.
Any other discussion, counsel?
I would just comment that I'm, I'm not certain where the information came from that the school district and the police department had never been involved in talks about public safety being involved in critical and. Okay. Thank you.
Counselors, anybody, any other comments?
Counselor Novak would like to make a comment.
Please.
Thank you. Can you all hear me okay? Because the audio on my end is a little bit breaking up.
Yes, they can hear you.
Thank you kindly. All right. So what I want to say is, first of all, I think I heard Mr. Cordier mention the fact that he, when he first came on to public safety, he reached out to the superintendent of schools and found out that we weren't doing anything with regard to the schools and public safety. So I really appreciate that. I don't in any way say that the appointee that Counselor Newton is putting forward is not qualified, because he certainly is. My issue here is, we already have a voice from the fire department on this commission. We would be duplicating. We have the fires, the fire chief is already serving on the Public Safety Commission. This, these commissions are supposed to be made of private voices, you know, first citizens, people who live in our town. And I, I'm just, I, I would, I, I really would like to see Mr. Cordier as a member of the public who has already done good things on this commission. I'd like his voice to remain on there, again, partially because the fire chief is already speaking out. And you would be duplicating the voice and have another person who's, who's a firefighter. We already have that voice represented, and then we're taking away a private voice and putting another public sector voice out there. I just take issue with that. To me, that's a duplication. And we need, as, as the gentleman, Mr. Anderson, pointed out in his letter, Tom Cordier is part of a well-rounded, experienced citizen panel focused on public safety. I want to keep these, these commissions with as much public voice as possible and the private sector, excuse me, as much of the general public as opposed to the public sector, private sector. And so that's why I don't want his voice taken away. And I do know, I understand, because I think I did the same thing. We, Counselor Newton is within her right to change people on, on a council or on a commission. But again, in this case, I just think that it would be a duplication of voices. And I, I, that makes me, that makes me really sad if that were to take place. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you, Counselor Novak. Counselor Newton would like to make a comment.
I would like to make a point of clarification. Eric Rao is not a firefighter. It was a previous position he had, he has served. He's been a resident here in Albany for, I believe, 10 years. He lives down the street from where I live. Currently, he serves as an emergency response planner. It wouldn't be a duplication of specialties.
Thank you both for your comments. Would a counselor like to, need more discussion?
The fire chief and the police chief both serve as staff liaisons to the commission. They are not members.
Yeah, the counselor?
Liaisons and not members. Liaisons and not members. Okay, so we don't have a fire chief or, or police chief as, as a member of that commission, and the commission, um, I, well, honestly, I, I still would prefer to have Tom Cordier's voice heard. I really would.
Good for you.
But that's my, that's my opinion here.
Thank you, Counselor Novak. Counselor, do we have a motion on this topic?
I move that we approve item seven-A-two.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
You can't...
Oh, I can't, I apologize.
You have a second?
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no.
No.
Thank you very much. Motion passes five to one. Thank you. So the consent calendar is complete. Next on the agenda is a staff report, annual code compliance report. Chris Shandell, it's a verbal report.
Just opening my PowerPoint real quick. There we go. Good evening, counsel. So when my position was first developed, it was established that I'd give an annual report regarding the ongoings of code compliance and their various actions throughout the city. Code compliance is made up of myself, and its goal is to make and provide our strategic planned goals of helping with safe city and great neighborhoods by removing blight and the onslaught of that, which is decreasing property values and life issues, as far as quality of life issues. So I'm just going to quickly go over some of the more high-end cases from this year, and if you have any questions, go ahead and ask. So within our, within the program, it's not so much you just go in there, name all the list of issues, and then leave. A lot of times, it involves getting senior services, mental health, volunteers, a bunch of different groups involved to hopefully solve that issue and not unhouse anybody, and it just takes a lot of time. So some of these have a lot more backstory, but I'm going to go over them real quickly just to save some time, but I'm happy to talk to any of you guys outside of this as well to go more depth. So this one, twenty-four, twenty-five, eighteenth, was an elderly couple there that had individuals that were kind of going into their property and taking advantage of them monetarily and just living there, to the point where the water system had been compromised and was running brown. A wall on the east coast, on the east side, was in disrepair and failure, and then the heating system had been pulled apart, so they're using propane heaters inside the house. During my talks with them, we got their family involved and senior services and mental health, because there was also hoarding issues involved, but the property owner had a pretty major health episode, which landed her in the hospital for an extent, and then ultimately to where she needed twenty-four-hour care. So the family went through and sold the property to somebody who'd take care of it. That's currently what it looks like, and she's kind of getting the care she needed. Five-oh-four Chicago Street, this is a more recent one. These individuals were in foreclosure, and during that time, their plumbing system failed and was backing up into all the bathrooms, therefore they were using buckets and then pouring that waste down our catch basins, leading to our waterways. And then there was no, there was electrical issues and a bunch of overcrowding causing. So the first one's the bathroom, that liquid, obviously, the backflow. The yellow ones in the middle, that's the urine bottles, and then all the other fun stuff. We ended up, through the process, we did vacate this one, and the owner is working with a bank to sell it so that he doesn't get foreclosure on record, and they should be finalizing that within the next few days and then rehabbing that house. That's currently how it sits as of last week. Seven-thirty-five Waverly, this one is a rental that the mother was renting to her son, who was incarcerated. After he was incarcerated, a lot of people just kind of squat there and ripped apart the electrical system. You could see on the top right-hand side of your screen, that's pretty common for what the whole house's electrical system looked like, lots of fire issues. The middle, they had run an electrical wire just above the showerhead, and then they were pulling apart the one-bedroom. If you could see above the light switch, that's a syringe that was just stabbed into the wall there. And then since the trash service was discontinued, they were just burning the trash in the backyard. So we had a lot of complaints from the neighbors around there of not only the crime goings, but also the smell and just general toxic stuff coming from there. That house was also vacated with the assistance of the property owner, and she's currently working through her insurance agency to get it rehabbed so that they could sell it. That should be getting done pretty soon. They're having to redo the whole house, so they've torn it down to the studs, and they're putting new plumbing and electrical, so it's taking a lot longer. Thirty-sixteen Grand Prairie, which Counselor Smith is very familiar with, has been on and off the list for a long time. About a year and a half, two years ago, we had placed a lot of liens on that property, and the bank that held the other half of the note to that was going to foreclosure. They eventually worked out a deal with the city, and instead of going into foreclosure, the son had stepped in and purchased and paid off all that. Once he took over, which was in twenty-twenty-two of last year, he worked with us to get the property vacated. He's demoed the mobile home on there that was falling apart, and is currently working through the planning process to subdivide and develop that lot. I believe there's seven to eight lots that they're developing on that, so increase our housing a little more. That's currently how it sits. I couldn't get a real good picture of the back half, but a lot of, they've pulled off dumpsters and dumpster loads of trash off that property to this point. Another one that's heavily involved in mental health is thirty-two-oh-five Harvard. This one is hoarding, but also self-harming and a bunch of other things. They had a leak that happened, and his roommate had left, so he was kind of left somewhat helpless, which increased his issues. The water system was leaking for a few months and caused the back half of the house to collapse, and then the trash service, even though he had it, he wasn't bringing it out, so the house, the additional weight increased and sped up the collapsing of the back of the house. We got him in touch with his family, who was kind of separated because of the issues going on there, and they've stepped in and are working with disability services, mental health, and senior services to get him into a group home, which is more of a place he'd thrive in. And then they're working on redeveloping this house or rehabbing this house, selling it, and using those proceeds to have his ongoing care. So that one should be going pretty quickly, and yeah. I don't want to get too much in the stories of it, because obviously, it's very personal, and some of these are pretty fresh for people. But each one of those, especially the ones that are, well, really all those, have high use of not only the APD, but our fire and mental health, I mean, our environmental health, and then the emergency care. On multiple of those, we'd had a couple fentanyl overdoses, so it was just kind of, it was a lot of issues all at once. The last one, which was really big last year, but some of you weren't on council, so I figured I'd go over it again, was the Waverly Cemetery. So most of this was just due to lack of maintenance. The maintenance manager there, who's since passed, is, he was eighty-three, I believe, and it's just an immense thing for him to take on, and their funds weren't really large, so doing such a large project would have been impossible for them. And our calls increased over two years from fifty-one to, or sorry, from thirty-one to fifty-one calls, including a theft of motor vehicle, assault, and then a large campfire. We worked with the property owner to clear out the vegetation in the side and all the garbage that was through there and cleared it out. Since then, that ended in September of last year. We haven't had one call to the location. I frequent there because in our deal, the property manager was going to continue maintenance, so I'm just making sure, since they, the guy passed and they're moving that helm along, that it's being taken care of. So I go through there a lot, and the use has all been good. We haven't gone to property back yet.
Chris, is that possibly an example of how the SEPTED process works also?
Yeah, so, thank you for that. So the SEPTED process, it's exactly that, bringing more eyes to it. When we had talked originally to the owners, which is the Masonic Group right here down on First, they were kind of against it because the blackberries, they felt, created a sticky barrier for people not to enter, but I explained to them how that wasn't true, because obviously there's tunnels throughout those systems, and those are where the fires happened and that kind of stuff. And really, once, you know, we have an easement, that path through there, it's not city property, it's private property, that easement allows our path to go through there. It wasn't being used as much just because the perception of what was going on in the bushes.
And for the, for the newer folks, can you tell, tell them what SEPTED means?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, so SEPTED is Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. That's what it stands for. So just modifying your environment to bring in what they would call good users instead of negative users, and then by bringing in the good users, it usually pushes out crime because people who want to commit crime don't like being seen, and they feel like they're being observed. So I just thought that was a good success. We also had, during our National Day of Service, which is on September eleventh, we had another group go out there. We cut back some more blackberry bushes and hemmed up some trees that were dying and falling, and then that is going to be on their yearly kind of cycle to help out that group and maintain the cemetery as we continue to go. And then just to go over the last thing, just some trends we're seeing, or I'm seeing, there's becoming more and more vacant foreclosures over the last year, one of which, so Chicago's seen a lot of it. They have two that are in foreclosure, one of which I showed you, and one that was a house fire, and then just all around, we've had more and more foreclosures get trash dumped on them from surrounding neighbors and that kind of stuff, so that is on an upswing. The Big Pickup, which we always had one event, we switched to two to kind of decrease the amount of trash throughout the city and help, that has slowly been going down in use, so we're switching from that. Instead of having two, we're just going to go back to the one in May, but then on the National Day of Service, have volunteers go out to different communities, and I've talked to Republic, and they're still willing to donate the same amount of dumpsters so that we could help people in the community, because our old Big Pickup used to be kind of a split where we'd go to private homes and help out elderly, disabled, and we'd do the Big Pickup, but with less and less volunteers, that got to be impossible, so now it's going to be split up maybe...
Do you have a date for that yet?
Say again.
Do you have a date for that yet?
It'd be the third Saturday in May, right? Third Saturday. That's the Big Pickup, and then the National Day of Service is every year is on September eleventh, but it'll be whatever's the closest weekend, and Island's been the one helping me with the, getting those volunteer groups together on that. So that's pretty much it. I'm happy to talk about any of it.
Four-two-five-eighteenth Avenue, that's near the intersection of Jefferson and Queen, is that correct?
Four-two-five-eighteenth. Let me look at it real quick.
Okay.
Oh, so that is, four-two-five-eighteenth is, yes, Jefferson and Queen. You are correct.
I'm familiar with that. I had no idea.
It's the little alley behind the seven-eleven, or alley, it's through way behind seven-eleven there, yeah.
Yeah, let's see. Thirty-sixteen Grand Prairie Road, thank you for that immensely. Thank you for all of us in Ward Three and most of the rest of town. That's been a mess for years, and I wanted to know, you said that the owner is going through the land use process to subdivide and develop. Is that the full four-acre property?
Yes.
Okay.
So I believe it's seven, so five of them would come off of Grand Prairie, two of them would come off that new subdivision that have an easement back there.
Yeah, but it goes all the way through the mountain.
Yep, all the way back, yeah.
The other one was, thank you for your years of attention to thirty-two-oh-five Harvard. That's been a long road, and I didn't realize it had, it was still that bad, but I'm glad to know that, that there's going to be a, a good ending to that.
Yeah, sadly, at one point, we, it got pretty much cleaned up, and it was actually looking like it was going to be transitioned into a care home, but then when COVID hit, they stopped accepting people, so it kind of put a break on that. And then his roommate left, so it kind of hindered that even more.
This address came to our attention, I believe, during a Big Pickup. Some years ago, it was, it was going to be a private property cleanup, and once our volunteers and staff got inside the house, we realized it was much more than that, and Officer Shandell took this on personally and has doggedly followed this and kept track of the occupant for a long, long time. Thank you.
And it's not uncommon, well, not uncommon, it's not, that kind of property isn't something we won't step into. I mean, in the last presentation in twenty-one, I showed where volunteers got into hazmat suits, and we were scraping feces out of a house, and, you know, we get into that area. This one specifically, because of the whole disintegration of the flooring, is just, that's not possible. But at the end of the day, you know, it's going to add to, once it's back and habitable, along with all those other houses that should add to our, you know, houses that people could live in safely, and our, you know, stock is also, hopefully, brings some pride of ownership in those areas as well.
One final comment for me. I wanted to point out that our code, our livability code has been criticized over the years, of people talking about the heavy hand of the, of the city coming down and throwing people out of their homes and so on and so forth. That doesn't happen. The point of, and the point of code compliance is compliance. It's not to punish people, it's not to take money from them, it's to improve their living situation so that they're safe and their neighbors are safe. That's what we always aim for, always have. So these are, these are examples of the kinds of things that go on, are happening behind closed doors, maybe even next door to us, that we don't know about sometimes, and, and people are endangering themselves and their neighbors because of situations that they sometimes can't control on their own.
Well, and sadly, like, as far as the elderly community goes, and I've gotten more and more involved with senior services, we had one lady who was trapped underneath her stuff because she was a hoarder, and eventually had to stay in a couple weeks in the hospital because of just overall health concerns and having to grow her muscles, and that, you know, since then, she had meals on wheels, is trying to develop that more communication between them when they see that stuff so that we could get in there beforehand, because after that's done, it's a lot more steps to get it rehabbed than it is if we get kind of halfway in there and get the volunteers in.
One of the things that I see in my, in my profession, because I work with, most of my clients are over the age of sixty-five, is that I kind of do spot checks, I call and check on clients, or just call and say, can we have coffee? And I go by the house, and when I start to see them declining, or I reach out to family and say, I'm seeing some signs from your mom or your dad, can you please come visit with me so we can kind of talk about their situation? And so I try to mitigate it early as I see it declining. Sometimes these folks don't have anyone.
No.
And they get to this extreme, and it's really stressing, and it's very hard to see this. So thank you for the work that you're doing. Counselor Smith, I agree, it's been going on for a long time, and you've seen more than all of us, so thank you for your insights on that. All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any comments from the rest of the council? Thank you. You have something?
Thank you.
Okay, please.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Doesn't seem like an easy job at all, but thank you for the good work you're doing.
I know, Counselor, she's gone through our Citizens Academy, which I go a lot more in depth of all the steps through it, but I'm happy to sit down and kind of, all the things we do with volunteers, and it's not just, here's the code, follow it or get the tuck out.
Right.
A lot of process. Some of the cases take a year, year and a half to try to make sure everyone's taken care of.
Thank you very, well done. Thank you. Next on the agenda is business from the council. Counselor Novak, since you're remote, why don't you go ahead and go first?
Yes, can you still hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good, I'm glad. Actually, I have nothing this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Montague?
I have one item, just a reminder for everybody to make sure you're locking your vehicles and not leaving any valuables in them. My neighbor recently found a Slim Jim in the gutter by his house, and so we will keep that in case we need it later, but for fingerprints if, if we get a lot of break-ins, but luckily, nobody... But luckily, nobody got broken into as far as I know, but just a general reminder to lock your cars, please.
Counselor McGee?
I don't have anything.
Thank you. Counselor Smith? You good? Okay. Counselor Newton? Counselor Novak? No, I'm sorry, Counselor Kupczynski?
Um, I guess, I guess I'm out of phase on this. Did we, did we go over the Citizen Advisory Group application process? Is that after the?
No, this is business from the council. That's what is there.
That's next on the agenda then. Okay. I'm okay. We're good.
You're okay? Okay, so we can go ahead and talk about it now, so let's go ahead and talk about that process. So Counselor Kupczynski had a question about the Citizen Advisory Group appointment process. Peter, you want to walk us through?
Yeah, this is, I don't know about walking you through, but this is really just appears in the agenda itself for transparency's sake. What's unusual about this is that Counselor Kupczynski has had to appoint somebody from outside his ward. And council policy is to, whenever possible, make the appointment from within the ward. So this, this, you know, if, if nobody has any concerns, then this is just another appointment to be made.
I do have a question. This person is from my ward, correct?
She's in Ward Three.
Mm-hmm. And this is serving on a planning commission, which states that they have to be in the ward or the planning commission?
That's what this is all about, yeah.
Right, so are we making an exception to the rule right now or is this going to be forever?
No, this is a case-by-case basis. This is just this one.
That's a great question, Counselor, Counselor McGee. Counsel, any, any other comments from the council? So can we have a motion?
I move we approve this appointment.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next, so for me, I've had a couple of things. Any, Counselor Kupczynski, anything else?
No.
Okay. I had a couple of things. I had a great meeting with a young person that I've known for eons. Our kids went to, my son and her went to school together. She, and I recommend everyone do this, she went to, there's a website called endoverdose.com. You take some training on overdose and they will send you two doses of fentanyl free. And so I've already done mine and it's.
Do you need Narcan?
Narcan, excuse me.
See, we're paying attention.
Okay, so you do listen. All right, thank you. And also, the, the, the first Friday's coming up and get out and see the community. It's a little chilly right now, but it's nice to get out and, and say hi to your neighbors. Get out and take a walk around town, downtown carousel, go to Chamber Commerce, go to the local businesses. I know that we're looking some of the distressing numbers and these big chains that are closing stores and, and laying people off, but we can support our local community just by walking downtown on First Friday, enjoying the food and the flavors and the chocolates because the holidays are coming up, Valentine's Day. But other than that, that's all I have. City Manager, your report, please.
Thanks, Mayor. I don't know if you want to share any of your perspectives on the League of Oregon City's City Day, but that was last Wednesday.
Fantastic, it was. So I will share a little bit about that. We went to the Capitol, Representative City of Albany, myself, Counselor Smith, City Manager Trotson and Seth Sherry as Economic Development Manager. We learned a lot about the laws and the issues associated with homelessness. There's another case coming out of Medford that we'll, we'll be paying attention to. But there's, there's things happening up there that was amazing. There's a federal chip act. I know Seth Sherry is working hard on getting us on that list to be a part of that, that federal fund, pocket of money, bucket of money to build a manufacturing plant here in the City of Albany, one of our two sites. We did meet with our rep, Shelley Bostart Davis, she was amazing. We talked about our, our land, we talked about projects we're working on, and she seemed pretty enthused. And I'll let you follow up what the staff did, if you don't mind.
That's pretty comprehensive, Mayor. I have nothing to add to that unless Counselor Smith says anything.
What about Seth testifying?
Well, Seth did, yeah, Seth did testify. I think I put that in a Friday email, but he testified that evening, Wednesday evening, on semiconductors. And as, as you had mentioned, Mayor, we're potentially in the running for, and I, it would probably be premature to talk too much about it, but I, I think that, given the fact that Albany has a substantial supply of, one of the biggest concentrations of industrial land available, it, it may end up coming here.
Well, let's hope, we'll continue to put pressure on our representatives.
Yeah.
And I forgot, one more thing. I received a great email from Farm Workers Housing Development. They actually, they got the funding to buy 8.6 acres to build some affordable housing here in the City of Albany. And so that was a good news and, and other than that.
Just a question for City Manager, with Seth's comments on the chip industry type process. I remember back in the, I guess it was back in the eighties or nine, early nineties when Albany went in collaboration with Corvallis, et cetera, and they were trying to put in the super, conducting super collider and they had to have like a 50-mile radius where they can do all this type of stuff. Are we doing any kind of collaboration with other towns to get a, an infrastructure built for some of these things?
Well, not infrastructure with other towns, but certainly with the state government and potentially with our neighbors.
County.
But the, the land that we're talking about exists all within the City of Albany's borders. And interestingly, it's, it's, by some estimates, the largest piece of land available on the, on the West Coast.
Really?
But, but it's encumbered, hard to access, so we need help to make that happen.
Okay, thank you, sir. City Manager, you got some more?
Well, just a couple more things. One is that, this is just happening, you'll probably notice it on social media or in the paper, but there was a car that went into the canal at Queen and Pacific and the driver is safe. I don't, I can't say he's uninjured, but he's been taken to the hospital. Boom has been deployed in the canal to guard against the spread of any contaminants, but what that's caused us to do is take the Vine Street Treatment Plant offline for the evening. It'll be back online tomorrow morning. And then the last thing I have for you is just to remind you that you have a joint meeting with the Planning Commission in about 30 minutes.
Thank you very much. So Monday, February, next meeting dates is Monday, February 6th, 20, oh, you canceled that one? You left it on here. Okay, well, Wednesday, February 8th, 6:00 PM in Chambers. And with that, I'll adjourn the meeting. And also, thank you.